I'd like to call this February 6th meeting of the Greenville County Council to order, and I'd like to ask Counselor Barnes to introduce your pastor for the invocation.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to introduce Reverend Joe Proust to come do our invocation for us, please, sir. If you'll come to the podium.
Would you join me as we pray? Lord, you have been our God in all generations, from everlasting to everlasting. You are God. You have created us. Lord, you sustain us. You are the giver of all good gifts. Your word tells us that every good and perfect gift comes from above, and, Lord, we recognize how blessed we are as a people. Lord, we're blessed because we live in the greatest land on earth, the land with the greatest freedom. Lord, we realize that that was a gift from you, that you put into the hearts of our founding fathers, Lord, to raise up a nation, Lord, that would honor you. We thank you for that gift. We thank you, Lord, that we live in such a blessed place as we do in that great nation, the state of South Carolina and the county of Greenville. We realize that's a gift, Lord. We are blessed people and a blessed nation, and we thank you for that. And, Lord, we also realize that one of the great gifts you give us is the blessing of government, which is your idea, so that we might live peaceable and free lives. And we thank you for that gift, Lord, of government. Your word ordains it and establishes it, and, Lord, it tells us about it, and we see that throughout Scripture. Lord, tonight, we thank you for the gift of those who serve in government, from our law enforcement officers, Lord, and to these who serve on county council, who work diligently, Lord, to bring about a peaceable life to all of us, and we know their job's not easy. We know there's a lot of hard topics and subjects that have to be discussed, and, Lord, we realize that they have to work things out in unity, and we pray for that tonight, Lord, so that we can continue to live the lives that we live here in Greenville County in South Carolina, in this great nation. Lord, your word tells us if we lack wisdom to ask for it, and you will give it to us. So, Lord, tonight, I pray for wisdom among these, our county councilmen. We pray, Lord, that they would be like Solomon when given an opportunity to ask for anything. He asked for wisdom to understand, not just wisdom alone, but the wisdom to understand, Lord, what the needs are and how to meet those needs. We pray for that for these, our good servants. And tonight, we also realize that your word tells us that the beginning of wisdom is the fear of God. So, we pray tonight, as they begin their deliberations here tonight, that they would understand, Lord, that they stand before you, and that they would do their word, Lord, as unto you. Lord, again, we thank you for all the good gifts you give us, the blessings you have bestowed upon us, and I pray that we would be worthy stewards of all of it. And we pray these things in your holy and righteous name, in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the original way to which stands one nation under God, peaceful, liberty, and justice for all.
Business on the agenda are the approval of minutes from January 16.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the ayes have it. We don't have any proclamations or special recognition, except for one, we'd like to welcome our, wish our colleague a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Ms. Seaman.
Thank you.
Appearances, current agenda items. Do we have anybody that signed up to speak? Okay. Next item on the agenda, public hearings, and I'll call on Counselor Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We have one public hearing tonight, Anderson-Greenville Joint County Industrial Business Park, 2010 Park Agreement Amendment Project Austin. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the deliverance of a development, excuse me, of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 Park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park and add certain property in Anderson County known as Project Austin. Ms. McCaskill, has anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Kirven, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, I declare the public hearing closed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda.
No. I want to object to that or file a motion to sever E.
Then we will move for adoption of the consent agenda with the exception of item E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the ayes have it, will put E up at the end of the agenda. Next item on the agenda are resolutions, and I'll call on Chairman Kirven. Project Tango.
Thank you, sir. Our first resolution is Project Tango. As you mentioned, I move for adoption, a resolution to amend that certain master agreement governing the Octagon Industrial Park, binding between Greenville-Lawrence County, South Carolina and Greenville County, South Carolina, dated September 1st, 2010, to enlarge the park and add certain property of Duke Energy Carolinas LLC located in Lawrence County.
All right. You've heard the motion. All those in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Project Cranberry Sauce, Counselor Kirven.
Yes, sir. Second resolution. I move for adoption, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Project Cranberry Sauce, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreement with respect to the project in the county, whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes, and whereby company will be provided certain credits against fee payments and reimbursement of investment in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters.
All right. You've heard the motion. All in favor of adoption of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Ordinances at third reading, Anderson-Greenville Joint County Industrial Business Park, Chairman Kirven.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have two ordinances at second, at third reading. Let me get my place here.
10A.
Okay. 10A. Anderson-Greenville Joint County Industrial Business Park, 2010 Park Agreement at Project Austin. I move for adoption at the third reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 Park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park, to add certain property in Anderson County known as Project Austin.
All right. All in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item 10B, Project Eagle, Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This item was inadvertently placed on the agenda at the last council meeting. This project was held until the public hearing was scheduled. That public hearing has not yet been scheduled, so we won't proceed further tonight on this.
Okay. Do we need to move to hold this, or?
It's already held, yes.
All right. All right. Sounds good. The next item on the agenda are ordinances at first reading, and we've got Lawrence-Greenville Octagon Industrial Park Agreement Amendment. Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, sir. I present for first reading an ordinance to amend the master agreement governing the Octagon Business Park, Industrial Park located, excuse me, between Lawrence and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park and add certain parcels in Lawrence County, Project Tomahawk.
All right. We'll keep that on the council floor. Item B, Chairman Kirven.
Yes, sir. This is also in Anderson County. I present for first reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 Park, of Anderson and Greenville County, so as to enlarge the park, to add certain parcels in Anderson County known as Project Colorful.
All right. That'll stay on the council floor as well. Item C, Chairman Kirven. Greenville County General Obligation Bond, Twin Chimneys.
Yes, sir. I present for first reading, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $11,500,000 Greenville County, South Carolina, General Obligations Bond, Series 2024A, to prescribe the purpose for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
All right. That'll stay on the floor. And final one, 11D, Project Cranberry Sauce, Chairman Kirven.
Yes, sir. I present for first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Cranberry Sauce, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
All right. That will stay on the council floor as well. We'll move to item number 12 on the agenda, committee reports, and I'll recognize Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to appoint the following Greenville County citizens, 2024 Academy, Marion Hunt, Lee Vining, Dennis Gibson, Rhonda Tucker, Peter Sperry, Janelle Phillips, David Mitchell, Eric Mitchell, Kathy Williams, and Phyllis Johnson.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item, appellate case number.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to approve the settlement of appellate case number 2023-000699 and Civil Action Number 2023 CP 23-03785 pursuant to the terms discussed in executive session.
All right. You've heard the motion. Any questions? All in favor of adoption of that report from committee, the whole, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item is administrator's report. He's out sick tonight, so we wish him well and hope he and his wife get better.
Chairman, matter from the consent agenda carried over to committee reports.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that back to our attention. So, item 8E from the consent agenda is the reappointment of current members to the County Square Redevelopment Corporation. Any questions on this item on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you're asking, or the agenda's asking the council to vote on these three individuals. It seems like a pretty important and consequential board. Is this a board that has to do with County Square redevelopment? And, because I look back at the minutes from about two years ago, and they approved a $120 million bond, and it looked like it had to do with the redevelopment. Am I right, or am I off on that?
I might ask Mr. Tolleson first.
Why don't you, Mr. Tolleson, can you give us kind of a quick overview?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I can help a little bit. This is the financing corporation set up for the redevelopment project, and that's what they do. It's not the property oversight or development necessarily oversight. It's just the financing mechanism group to do issuances on behalf of the county for the project.
Okay. So, they would be making decisions ongoing about the redevelopment of all that property and?
No, just regarding debt.
Okay. And?
And that's if we authorize it.
Correct.
Yes, sir. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. All three, I would just move that we would hold this to give us a little chance to just maybe even hear from these. I mean, we spent a day or two interviewing all the board members for every other board. I don't recall, it appears, I know Ms. Graceley personally, she's a great lady, but she's the, it appears every one of them is a government employee. One of them is employed by Greenville County, Mr. Castillo, right?
Is that a motion, Mr. Shaw?
Yes. I'd just like a motion to hold this or reconsider it at a different time and give us a chance to hear from these folks, see what, interview them, basically, for this important board.
Ms. Chairman, I move to table Mr. Shaw's motion.
All right. All those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of the board members.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please. Ms. McCaskill, if you'll call the roll, or put the roll up. All right. The motion is adopted. Moving on to item 14, requested motions by council members, I'd like to call on Chairman Barnes for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reconsider the waste tire hauler's ordinance. In our December 5th meeting last year, we unanimously adopted a waste tire hauler ordinance, ordinance number 5574, at third reading. Since then, the county and the sheriff's office determined the sheriff's office should administrate the ordinance. To do this, we need to bring the ordinance back and put in the sheriff's office in place of the solid waste division.
You want to read the motion? Well, there's four amendments that are redlined in your docket, or your packet. Do you want to read those, Mike? Mr. Barnes, do you want me to read that, or?
Yes, sir. I move to suspend county council, rule number 3D9, to allow council to consider third reading on this ordinance.
All right. All those in favor of suspending council rule 3D9, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next motion?
I move to suspend the council rule 4B3, to allow council to take up amendments to the ordinance at third reading.
All right. All those in favor of suspending council rule 4B3, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next motion?
I move to amend ordinance 5574 to replace all references to the solid waste division with Greenville County Sheriff's Office.
Okay. All those in favor of amendment number 3, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Final motion is, Ms. Chairman?
I move to adopt the ordinance as amended.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And that is, the reconsideration is adopted, and we've made those changes. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thanks, sir.
I'd like to call on Dr. Fant for open special application period.
Mr. Chairman, if you will indulge me, before I do that, I want a quick announcement about SC-TAC, which is an important update. I don't want Ms. Seaman to think I've forgotten. SC-TAC President and CEO, Jody Barber, I mean, Jody Bryson, joined Governor Henry McMaster.
Mr. Chairman, point of orders, is this on the agenda? I've, he's making an announcement. It's, yes, I've let him speak. He's got the chair.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't, this is what we used to do at the end of all the meetings, where all of us could kind of grandstand a little bit about something that we've done or something in our district. I would ask that you just get on with the business on the agenda.
Well, Mr. Shaw, you're overruled. I have recognized Mr. Fant. He's not said me, I, or myself at all in this motion. He's talking about SC-TAC and an announcement with the governor coming, so I'm recognizing Dr. Fant.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. SC-TAC President and CEO, Jody Bryson, joined Governor Henry McMaster, Lockheed Martin officials and other state dignitaries in Columbia last week to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Lockheed Martin F-16. During a State House ceremony, Governor McMaster issued a proclamation honoring Lockheed Martin's longstanding contributions to South Carolina. At the official press conference in the governor's office, Lockheed Martin Vice President and F-16 program Trish Pagin publicly recognized Jody and SC-TAC for their incredible partnership over the past 15 years, leading to Greenville's designation as the global home of the Lockheed F-16.
Great. Congratulations, SC-TAC and the governor and the F-16 Lockheed Martin. Thank you, Chairman Fant. You're now recognized with a request or a motion, item 14B.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. As noticed on the county council agenda, I move to suspend Section 11 of the Greenville County Boarding Commission policy, so as to allow for a motion to open a special application period for the Greenville County Planning Commission.
All those in favor, that's.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead, man, whoever. I've been kind of paying attention to this because the two people that we lost off of the Planning Commission were from my district.
Hold on, hold on one second, Mr. Blunt. Do you have a motion? Because he's made a motion. I need to, I need to.
Just suspend the rules to talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, our.
Just to suspend the rules. That's all.
Well, I guess it would technically be in consideration of whether we should suspend the rules or not.
Okay. You're recognized.
We have elections coming up for this in May as well, correct?
We didn't.
So, is there anything pressing that's causing us to have to fill these spots between now and May?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. We've expressed, or at least I have, received concerns from the chairman of Planning Commission that their next meeting, they may not have a quorum. So, that's part of the reason, and another reason is one of the members unexpectedly resigned.
Right.
So, this is a, so, yeah, you know, judge. But, so that was, that's the big issue. They're in jeopardy of not having a quorum at their next meeting. So, the regular application period would be after that.
I'll break the question up, and I have another one for the next part, too.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Roll call, please.
I've already asked for the ayes, so the, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
No.
All right. The ayes have it. You just, when you ask for a roll call, you've got to do it before I announce the.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The next item, well, the next.
Now, with the motion, yes, sir. I move to open a special 10-day application period for the Greenville County Planning Commission in order to fill two vacancies due to recent resignations.
All right. Mr. Blunt?
One of these seats comes up in May, if I'm not mistaken. So, I would suggest that we, if we were going to fill seats, it'd be one versus two, because then this person who we fill it with is going to have to turn around and immediately do this again in May. So, the one seat would make sense. The two, to me, seems, it doesn't really make any sense unless there's something that we need it for that I don't know about.
Maybe ask clerk if she has.
Point of information.
Mr. Juvalakis?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just say that if we've got an election coming up in May, we have now gone on since Mr., I don't know which one, had a heart attack or had a heart issue. We've had meetings that's gone on now for a few months. Without him being there, I don't understand what the rush is now that we have to have a, make, break the rules and having a special election when we can do this in May. So, I just don't understand it, and why we, why we need to do it. I hear we're talking about a quorum, it's only two more months, three more months. Why do we got to do that now?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kirven, Chairman Kirven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, the Planning Commission makes a lot of important decisions on behalf of all citizens around the whole county. I think it's very important that we don't leave vacancies on the Planning Commission any longer than we'll have to, because we want the Planning Commission to represent as many citizens around the county as possible, and I would support filling it with the open period for two applicants that this period has proposed.
All right. Mr. Juvalakis?
I'd like, if we're going to do that, I think it ought to be a 45-day time to give us more time to look at, for applicants that we're going to fill that.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
I'd like to make amendment.
All those in favor of amending the motion to make it a 45-day application period, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The noes have it. That amendment is defeated. So, we're back to the motion to open a special 10-day application for the two Planning Commission vacancies?
Yeah.
Ms. Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you all probably already know this, but just, I pulled it up from our website. In addition to the two people we lost, there's actually already a vacant seat. So, I think that's also part of the challenge, that we're, they're already down one, and now technically, they're down three, so.
Mr. Chairman, and we've got, it's my understanding, we've got two potential openings coming up in March, so we could have five members of this board that are not there, so. Mr. Blunt?
I would just like to stress that Mr., or Judge Looper, that I talked to him right when he had to do this. It's been months since he was taken out, or since he removed himself from the board, and everything seemed to go smoothly, so I still think that having the two with the one that's going to have to immediately come, it's not really fair to the person.
Right.
We're going to select somebody, and they're going to have to come back in three months and maybe not get the seat the next time.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Seaman?
Mr. Blunt, and maybe, so, again, I'm just looking at, so, Mr. Howard's seat, right, is one, so his term technically doesn't expire till '25.
Right. But what about Mr. Looper's seat? Met's Looper?
Yeah, so that's, so that's the one you're talking about?
Right.
Because it expires in '24. I get what you're saying. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I respect Mr. Blunt. I understand completely what Mr. Blunt is saying, and I agree with that. The only reason I think this is important is because, to, I guess from Blunt's point, it has been vacant for months, and to be honest with you, I've been hearing from the chairman of Planning Commission constantly, they needed to fill it, and they've been trying to make do. I think in addition to the resignation, I think there's going to be some other conflicts from what I've gathered from the chairman and some other current members at the next meeting from regular scheduling issues. So, he's been on us for a long time that needs to be filled. So, I agree with you, and I think they've been trying to make do with waiting to the application period, but I think they're in jeopardy of a quorum issue.
Yes. My next question would be then, if that's what we're doing, which still sounds really squarely to me, how are we going to decide who gets the short session and who gets the full one?
If, let me ask, and, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. Help him with that one, if you want me to. I was just going to ask Regina, does, how many, if we did one, how many members would that put on the, potentially at the next meeting from, on the, on the board? If we only did one in the special application period? I'm just trying to see, would they have enough for a quorum?
Mr. Harrison, it's a nine-member board. They're with seven members now, that would give them eight.
And then, if there's two, if there's two that are out for other reasons at the next meeting, so they still could have six. I, I mean, I've got no problem doing one, but I just, I think it's important we fill, we have a special application period, at least fill something, because they have a quorum.
If we want transparency, so we can just kind of know who's, which one's going to get which. Long before you came here, Mr. Blunt, we argued that there needed to be minority representation on the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission goes into minority communities, and they need a representation. I can assure you, Mr. Howard leaving, the person that takes Mr. Howard's place will not only be African-American, but they will also be a female. So, we're going to cover it to it. So, now, that one was already kind, that, so they, that would be a one-on-one swap.
So, so whoever the African-American female is gets the longer one, and the other one gets the shorter one by default? I don't understand where that comes into play.
They would be taking Mr. Howard's spot.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, whoever doesn't, whoever fits that profile is going to be getting that, that extended period?
They're just filling the term.
Right. That, how do we, how do we decide that because of their race or gender, that they get a longer term than the person that we're trying to.
Because they just so happen to be filling the one, because Mr. Howard got called to act.
Right, for deployment.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, is there a rule? Do we have a, is that in the rules of county council, or is that in our books, what Mr. Counselor Fant just said? So, if that's not in the rules, then that's not the case. What he just said is not accurate.
Mr. Juvalakis?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Calm down.
Yes, sir.
That's, that rule that he referred to has nothing to do with the motion that is before us. The motion before.
Why did you call him out of order then?
The motion, because he can speak. I'm not calling you out of order, but I'm just saying, the motion in front of us is a 10-day application for two appointments.[1684.92]
Mr. Chairman.
We're not discussing rules changes. I mean, that's-
How about, how about this? How about we call the question?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, he called the question.
Well, discussing my name and then bringing up race and gender is just ridiculous, so I'd like to respond if I could.
Well, I, I-
It was just a point. I've called the question. It's not debatable.
Call the question is a privileged motion. All those in favor of calling the question?
Roll call.
Okay.
There is no motion to amend the motion.
My goodness.
There is no motion to amend the motion. This is, we're voting on calling the question.
Voting on calling the question.
Voting on calling the question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you have four in favor, eight in opposition.
Okay. Okay, say that again. What was that?
There are four in favor, eight opposed.
Okay, so we are not calling the question. That motion fails. So, the motion before us, again, is the 10-day application for the Greenville County Planning Commission in order to fill two vacancies.
And I'll call, roll call for that, please.
Mr. Blunt?
Sorry. I would like to make a motion to amend the motion. To that, we nominate one seat, but not the seat that the term's going to expire in May.
Okay. Is that, Mr. Tolson, is that clear enough, a motion for, okay? All those, does everybody understand that motion? We're going to change it to one vacancy, which is already occurring?
You asking to not fill Judge Looper's seat, the one he had?
Whoever's, whoever's term is going to, whoever's term's going to result in a two-month, you know, seat, and then they have to do it again, whoever that is. If it's, if it's Metz, or if it was Javaris, I have no idea.
Are we calling to support that? That's what we, are you, what do you say? Be clear on what you're saying, not against her.
The one that, the one that will renew in March or May, we're taking that one off the, off the open application.
Which is Judge Looper, correct?
We're not doing it unless it passes.
Right, exactly. All right, so-
Actually, if it's a big deal, I can live with that. I can live with that. Now, it's going to be, it may cause a tie from time to time, but-
I would like to speak to the amendment, to the motion on the floor. I disagree. As I said earlier, the sooner we can fill these vacancies, the better it is for the citizens of Greenville County. Even though it might be a short period of time, whoever's in there can reapply as anybody else can, but I think we need to get them filled as soon as we possibly can. That's my position.
Any other?
Just a point of information.
Mr. Bradley?
Do we not go about a year with eight before this? Did we not go with eight?
I'm not, I can't answer that.
I'm pretty positive we did.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a point of information.
Do you, do you have a question?
I do, yes, sir. Just to be clear, this, we will have an opportunity to consider and debate the applicant in the, that's what-